Everyone, good crisp fall day. Are we ready to get started?
Sure.
All right. Is there anything that needs to be added to the agenda at this time? All right, is there a motion to approve the October 22nd, 2025 agenda as submitted? Thank you Cynthia. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you Emily. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the September 24th, 2025 meeting minutes, pending disposition of gifts report and statistical reports as submitted? Thank you Garrett, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Sharon. I do not see any people from the community, but I welcome everybody. We're so glad to have you here. Let's begin with the Friends Report, but before I do that, I will tell you this is this very week, the 20th anniversary of National Friends of the Library Week. And Clay, if you will send to Ruth and all the Friends, all of the trustees appreciation for what they do on this important week, we'd appreciate it. Okay, over to you.
Okay, Ruth and Pat won't even have a formal report, but the main thing coming up fast tomorrow, October 23rd, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, they'll be having their Friends will be having their annual meeting at the Maine Library. And Tony Gentry, the author of The Night Doctor of Richmond, which is a book that takes as its subject Chris Baker, the infamous 19th century grave robber that was employed by the Medical College of Virginia, he will be there to speak before they have the formal business part of their meeting. And that's tomorrow evening, 6:00 to 7:30 PM. The book sale is coming up November 7th through 9th. As usual, the hours will be, members only sale that Friday, 10:00 to 12:00, and then 12:00 to 8:00 afterwards, open to all. Saturdays hours, 10:00 to 4:00, and Sunday, 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Foundation Susan.
Good morning, everyone. Morning, everybody. I missed everybody last month. Glad to be here this month. I am delighted to share that our recent grant awards from the Christman Family Foundation and the Memorial Foundation for Children, both of these grants support early childhood literacy and summer intern programs, and we are deeply grateful for their generosity. Additionally, I would like to mention that we are grateful for the recent increase in donations through stock gifts to the Foundation. Three individuals or families have recently gifted over $73,000 in stock in the past few months. So if you have stock and you are interested in knowing what you might want to do with that, please know that the Foundation does accept gifts of stock. Additionally, I went to the National Council of Nonprofits. There's been a lot of conversation about the impacts of charitable giving from the one big beautiful bill act or H R 1. The National Council of Nonprofits indicates this will indicate charitable end of year giving in 2025 and 2026 giving. In their words, what we are seeing at the federal level has far reaching implications for charitable nonprofits with changes to charitable giving and taxes. Changes to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Medicaid, and other federal programs will put greater pressure on nonprofits to help meet local needs. If you are interested in the breakdown that they prepared, please let me know. I have that. Very high level though, if you do not itemize, then in 2026, you will get full benefit of your tax donation. However, if you itemize, individual taxpayers can only deduct contributions that exceed 0.5% of their adjusted gross income. So this is something that we're going to be informing donors about over the next few months because it is important that they be planning their giving, not just this year, but into next year as well. Finally, the Foundation's year end board meeting and open house is December 3rd at the West End Branch Library, and we hope you will all join us. We'll be sending an invitation as we get a little bit closer, but want to share that with you now so you can save the date. And that is the end of my report. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, let's move to library administration. And Scott, talk to us and introduce Beth.
Oh, I'll go over my, I can go over my report real quick. I have a couple of quick things. Library card signup month, we did an outreach event practically every day this last month.
So cool.
We signed up 1,088 new library card users. And a new graphic was selected as part of a big campaign to select a graphic for our new online sales store. It's a bonfire store, so it's going to raise money for the Library Foundation. So you can purchase coffee cups and t-shirts and all kinds of things with this logo. Endless Possibilities was the one that landed on as a part of the voting that patrons did during National Library Card Signup Month. So very successful. I think we keep growing the program. Last year was our first year. This was year two. We're going to continue to keep making this better. I attended the Vipul Day meeting in early October at the Library of Virginia. They hit on two things. Library of Virginia is undergoing a renovation of their large building, so they are beginning the process of hiring an architect and doing the research for how they will update their building. They said, no, their building's only 20 years old, but it was built at a time when microfilm readers and physical information and book reading was going to be the way people, they thought it was going to be the way people were going to interact with libraries, and that had never happened. So they are going to be updating their spaces to try and to make it more modern and welcoming and user friendly for people to, when they, when they go to the Library of Virginia. So that will be a project that starts this year and is going to continue probably for the next five years. So those are the big things that happened at, for us. So Library Card Signup Month wrapped up, and we're just gearing up for read up. So there's some nice information in your packet about all of those things. I also want to highlight the Renaissance Fair that we had at Westover Hills. I believe we had about 1,000 attendees show up on that day as close to the estimate. So we had no idea that it was going to be that big. I think Danielle said they were, she was hoping to have 300, but it turned out closer to 1,000. So that will probably be returning. And without further ado, I'm going to turn the floor over to Beth Morris, our Library Community Services Manager in charge of all of, pretty much all of our youth services programs. So she makes it happen.
I try. Hi, everybody. I wanted to talk about a few things that is happening in youth services, mostly for summer reading. So this past year for summer reading, we had 3,902 people sign up for the program. Of that, 3,874 returned for more than one program, and 3,548 people actually completed the full program. Of that extra number, I just wanted to say, we had a lot of people at Maine that came through over the summer that were visiting grandparents for several weeks. And so a lot of them joined our program, knowing that they would only be able to do it for three or four weeks, but because of the Level Up program, they were able to get prizes on their journey as well. So we wanted to make sure we captured all of our outside folks that joined our program this year. There were two summer programs that we had last year for a summer school that we did not have this year, so that kind of affected our numbers a little bit. But overall, we had 9,797 people attend our summer programs for June, July, and August. So we are well on our way to increasing our programs, which is a huge part to our summer interns. So we had 10 summer interns again this past summer. We were able to increase our number of programs offered from last summer from 1,176 programs to 2,682. Some of our successes with our interns now that the program is over, two of our summer interns are now employees with the City of Richmond. Library one is a library technician at the East End Branch, and the other one is our library technician with our Read with Ripple program. So it's really nice. And then one of our very first interns, Casey, I just filled out a reference form, and she got a full-time librarian job in Massachusetts, which is where she wanted to go. So we were all very excited about that. And when I was talking with the person on the reference, she added a huge part that being a summer intern really got her into the library and wanting to do this job. And so she asked me a little bit more about that program and how it started. So that was kind of nice that the word is getting out. And the people that we have as our interns are actually turning around and doing great things for the library. So we hope to continue that program with the assistance of the Foundation and all the grants. I can't even think of the word right now. Thank you. Great funding that they collect for us to be able to do that. And so with all of the interns, we were able to increase our system-wide programming from 3.8% to 18% over the last two years. So that just goes to show that the extra help of us helping other folks come into our world and learn our jobs and get them on their way is really helping us and our patrons out with what we can do with that extra help. So we hope that continues. In early literacy, we did rename our RBA Reads program that we had for the last few years. It's been rebranded to Read with Ripple. And we have hired two new people for those positions because the two ladies that were running that program both retired. And so we have Adri Newman. She is now our new Read with Ripple Management Analyst, so she will be running the program. And Sean Williams, who was one of our interns, is the library technician that will be working with her to help go out to all the Big Five RPS preschools and the elementary schools that have Head Start in them to take the program to those guys. In addition to that, we as a library staff have added to Read with Ripple. So all of our associates and our librarians that go out to daycares are also taking the Read with Ripple program to them. So now we have increased our numbers, right? So we have gone from what, I think it was 782 people that we were initially doing with RBA Reads, and increasing, we now have over 1,700 children that we are meeting and getting books into the homes. So that is great, and we'll continue with that.
I am so impressed.
We have also added 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, and right now we have 217 children signed up and working through their goals. So every time we see new children, we constantly try to get more into that. And then the Foundation is also still working on, where we had our Early Literacy Center added to Maine, we are working on getting those type of sensory boards and early literacy manipulatives into every branch, so that every branch has those items for the children to play with. But we have seen a huge increase at Maine with our Early Literacy Center, not just, you know, the increase of people coming to use it as they hear that we have this, but now they're staying longer after storytime and playing there. Our circulation has increased. And so we hope that continues and then continues through the branches as they get more things for their children. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about was our young adults. Genevieve had six interns working with her this summer, in addition to our other 10 interns, working specifically with young adult programs through the City Yes program. And then she is now currently working with four interns to work on redesigning and making recommendations for our media space. So there is a QR code out there on the website, so if anybody wants to add into the survey of other information, please check that out. And Genevieve is currently speaking at the Urban Library Council Leadership Conference, talking about what we do here in the city for opportunity youth. So all of that will be in next month's bulleted report of what we're doing in youth services. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I have a statement first.
Okay.
We should all, when we leave, say thank you to Beth because she just, she is skilled. She understands her profession. And have you sensed the enthusiasm she brings to the table?
Thank you.
We are lucky every day, and you are deeply appreciated.
Oh, thank you, appreciated.
I really like the increase in programming, having gone to several programs last summer. I think that's fabulous. Can you sustain that? Can you do, is it your thought that you will do still more programs next year? Are we at the right level? What are you thinking?
I think right now we're at a good capacity level with the number of programs, but it is always our goal to add others.
Right, okay.
And we also give our interns, you know, as part of theirs, if they have an idea of a program that they would like to do, that we can do a pop-up quick program.
Okay.
We do those. So sometimes they get captured.
Okay, great.
But yeah, that's always our goal is to constantly increase until we don't have the capacity.
But going from 3% to 18 is a pretty big jump, so.
From, from the June to August last year to June to August this year.
Right, right, right. Thank you.
Yes.
Can I ask something else? I know it may sound strange, but Richmond has a juvenile detention center. And those children have to be taught, are we doing anything over there?
Yes, Genevieve has a great connection with them, and there are two programs right now that they're currently working with them through. And then I've actually given Genevieve contact that I have with The Huddle, and that is just a group of men in the city that again, work with opportunity youth. So they're going to partner up to pull some out and do some one-on-one counseling while Genevieve is doing some programming with them. And then the other thing, I'm sorry, I just remembered. When Scott was talking about Library Card Signup Month, I just wanted to add, like, we pull from all of the elementary schools, middle, high, and preschools. And right now, I'm getting all of those schools to turn in those applications. So I have currently made 412 library cards for RPS, and I still have four schools sitting on my desk to do, and others that have just emailed me to come pick up. So I really feel like we're going to well increase that 1,000 mark this year.
This is why we have to say thank you. We're so lucky we have you Beth.
Thanks Beth.
All right. Any other comments you want to make Scott? Good, okay. Let's go to advocacy. At our last meeting, Bill and Sharon agreed to lead a really important initiative that working with Scott involves creating the RPL budget. Now, we are fiduciarily, as this board, responsible for the budget. So having two people take on an initiative that was careful, thoughtful, working with Scott, enormously important. And we appreciate you doing that. We have heard repeatedly, it's going to be a tough year. And we believe that. We believe that. So what we're going to do here, and it's going to be the deep thinking that we do at this meeting, is we're going to have Bill and Sharon, with support from Scott, talk through the budget request, which has already gone in. Once we understand and are good with it, Scott is going to take us through the new budget cycle, different than previous years. So we know what, we don't know all of it, but we have the sense of what's going to happen. Then as a group, we are going to develop our advocacy plan. Okay, so this deep dive, we're all working, and we're going to start with Bill and Sharon.
Okay, thank you Chris. First off, let me just touch on the overall budget. Everything seems, seems good there, and Scott has put in, what we're going to really talk about today is increases over what's currently going on. So Scott's put in a budget with increases to cover things like security and the cost of living, wages, things like that. We're talking now about things that are going to be expanding our services. And basically, when Sharon and I met with Scott, we really tried to look at what the priorities this board has set, and how we continue enlarging upon those or continue achieving those. And I think we broke, broken into two things, operating budget and capital budget. Okay, and first, we'd like to talk about the operating budget. I'll just go through, Sharon jumping at any point on anything here. Okay, okay. First thing we talked about was access, continuing access, hours, et cetera. And Scott went back and did some work on that. We talked about what we'd like to accomplish on those hours. And Scott, we basically talked about expanding the hours to five days a week, nine to nine?
Yeah, eventually. That's our five-year.
Eventually, that's our long-term, right? And then Saturdays, nine to six, and Sunday afternoons at most representative libraries. The long-term goal. So going to the extended hours budget here as a step toward that, Scott's basically, we've looked at it and said, okay, we think we need about 400,000, 392, eight based, but about $400,000 in this year's budget to start moving us further to those hours. The outreach expansion is our next thing, and that is getting to places that the libraries are not reaching easily now, Bookmobile, Mobile Library, Outreach Vehicle, whatever we want to call the item we're going to be purchasing from the 26 capital funds. We'll start going out and deploying programs directly to different neighborhoods. It's going to spend time in areas where our libraries are less accessible than we'd like. We can put it that way, maybe difficult to get to on public transportation particularly, or just, you know, for other reasons, difficult to get to. And in doing that, we should be starting to get some information to help us with capital, in that that should let us know, do we have a tremendous outpouring of need and use when we park the Mobile Library in far South Side Richmond, or far East End of Richmond, or different locations, Scott's addition even, or, you know, various areas. So it will give us the ability to service those areas and also gather data that will let us know as we refine plans in the future. The staffing of that is going to take about 300, 230,000, rather, about quarter of a million, a little over. And that's going to include, you know, that's basically driver, people working on it, people running programs. So I can't say exactly which FTEs they are. I mean, I'd like to see Scott and I, Sharon, talk about, it'd be nice if the driver could also do more than just drive in some of these. You know, we don't want to spend just on that. But anyway, you're working on that. That's where we've come up with this 230. We talked as a group about what a wonderful job the outreach to youth has been, and this was a great presentation today to show how well we're on track with that. And we're sort of at a point there where it's marginal increases now. We don't need giant. We've got those 10 summer interns, for example. We don't need to take it up to 20 right now. We think it's time to start shifting a little bit toward that, addressing our, I won't say elderly population, because a lot of us can be offended by that. But the slightly more mature populations, that's what we say.
Seasoned.
Seasoned, thank you Chris. So what we're referring to is lifelong learning, and that's going to support job seeking, advanced ed, job certification skills, and senior programming. So it sort of does, senior citizen programming, sort of does a lot of that, turning from addressing youth to turning to our adults, whether they're looking for jobs and need help with that type of thing in their twenties or thirties, or whether there, those of us in our later sixties or whatever, and maybe not as comfortable with how to do certain things, or access the library in one way or another, will help with that. We're programmed just to get them together.
Technology skills. I just said technology skills.
Yeah, technology skills, things like that. About 170,000, 169,500 we have in for that. Young adults expansion, what we're trying to do there is establish one youth librarian at each location. And this isn't quite like the summer program, so when I said we're shifting from that, we're not letting go of our youth. But we do see that when we have a youth librarian full-time, you can run more programs at the library. It just makes that continue. Just hearing about the number who have signed up for the 1,000 Before Kindergarten book program, things like that go much more smoothly when you have someone in the library working those things consistently. About 195,000 to do that, 194,500 we've asked for. And children's literacy, expanding that program and continuing, we're only looking for about 65,000 additional there. So that's sort of, it's a very minor increase really in that group. And that totals up to just over a million 50. So 1,503,500 that we're looking for in an increase over our current operations budget. And we'll let Scott talk about that. I'm going to quickly talk about the capital. That's what Scott's already put in for, by the way. He has asked for that much in the, in the operating budget. The capital budget is due on Friday, our request for that. And the goals that we have there, we haven't, I don't have a number on that Scott, do I? We really don't.
We don't have numbers.
Right, so we don't have one. So we have just put them in as concepts more. One of the first of those is just what we talked about with correcting geographic imbalance. I think at the last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion about it. You know, the three South Side versus five North issue, Mobile Library is going to help us figure out actual need and some of that, and so on. So we want to figure out how we're going to balance that or deal with any of those. Dealing with the branches that are Dealing with the ranches that are just frankly overwhelmed size-wise, I think West Over Hills, and I think 1,000 people at Renaissance Fair, I have no idea how they managed to get them in the building or in the grounds in the area, how they managed to park, whether, you know, people were out stopping traffic on Forest Hills so that they could get across the road from the veil or whatever, parking over there. But it's a problem we have, obviously, in West Over Hills, East End, and Belmont in particular. So we want to look at that. And then the final thing is the main library situation. And Janet and the facility team did a fantastic job of coming up with the, working with the capital people on the replacing the library option. Candidly, I don't think, and I think Chris is sort of with me on that, she feels the same way, and Scott's a good city employee who doesn't want to give up on anything, but also, I think, sees the issues. We think it's unlikely that we're going to get 70-plus million dollars to replace the main library right now. So what we've, we're trying to do is, as we put it, resolve the main library crisis. So not replace it, not renovate it, but resolve that crisis. However, the city capital budget lets us do that. If it lets us do it with replacement, fantastic, let's go for that. And if they say, well, we can get that money available in the next three years or five years or something, we're great. If that's not the case, let's accept that. It isn't going to happen with a complete replacement, and let's see what we can do about getting enough money to deal with really pressing issues we have in there, and let's stop band-aiding it along. We have been spending hundreds of thousands of dollars a year doing things which, if we replaced the library, would be completely wasted, and are not really effective even for renovating, because we would be changing things around and we'd lose a lot of that. And I will mention that one of the things that I hope will help us there is just the recognition of how, despite the fantastic job that library staff does, and Cheryl in particular, on keeping the library running. Right now, library is dealing with a lawsuit because someone managed to knock over and fall over a railing. Now, I don't believe that the railing, anyone knew that the railing was susceptible to failure, and it took, you know, several hundred pounds of weight pushing against it to make it happen. But we just never know where the next one of these are, with the building still falling into disrepair, as far as, you know, major things. So I think, you know, the city needs to look at it. Those things can be very expensive to not have resolved, and we will be looking at that, Scott. You'll start putting numbers together on that as we go, and you're putting these concepts in for the project, I mean, the capital budget on Friday. So that's pretty much where we are. Scott, do you want to talk a little bit about then, the process? The schedule has shifted as much earlier.
Okay, let's ask questions on the budget, and then we'll go through, because I have a question, and there might be other people who have questions. So the million dollar, what percentage is that? You're asking for an increase, is it? Don't make me do the math.
It's about 9%.
9%? Okay. Don't make me do the math.
Yeah, roughly.
So we're just asking for 9% increase?
Over this year. So with that 9%, we can do those things that Bill outlined. If we don't get the 9%, it's going to be harder for us to continue what we're doing, but we're going to be able to maintain what we're doing.
Okay.
Right, I mean, and if we don't get the 9%, we would hope we'll get something. I mean, I'm really hoping we're not looking at just a status quo. You know, we all saw the discussions about real estate tax rate, and, you know, my takeaway from that is, okay, they didn't give us that, we've got $31 million, most of it probably uncollectible, but in back taxes that are out there, they're telling us, you know, it's going to be a tough year. But I don't think, you know, I read what Andrew Breton sent out in his first district newsletter recently, where he said, you know, he voted to keep the tax rate where it was because of outreach type of things that he wanted to see happen. Emily, would you say that's a fair, you've read that one, I'm sure, type of a thing. I think we fall right into that. This is part of that, whether Parks and Rec, the library, other things, that they said, we're keeping money in there to do that. I think we should be able to count on the budget being at least what it was last year, plus the increase, you know, for the normal things that go up, plus some of the things we need to accomplish here. That should be our request.
Okay, so you can see that the budget is aligned with the strategic plan. Please ask Bill and Sharon and Scott any questions that you have, so that we're all in what the ask is and does it make sense, part of our fiduciary responsibility. Yeah. Any questions?
Have we hit the priority site? Do you think?
I personally think it's great. I think you outlined that very, very well. Took a lot of those that are meeting this Friday with my councilwoman, Sarah Albino. So I'm planning to mention these things with her and talk to her about her, and make sure that we are doing the best we can from an advocacy perspective, at least in my district, to ensure that we are getting a champion in those discussions.
And now tying in with Scott's discussion about timing of things, but everyone feels pretty good about it, and we hit the direction that the library board still believes we should be going. We've shifted just a little bit with the adult versus the children, and we're on track.
It's the right, I mean, we've been investing, yeah.
Good, okay.
Okay. Sharon, anything you want to add?
No, I think Bill summed it up perfectly.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do we have that document that you read from?
Yeah.
Do we have a copy? Where's it in here?
No, my summary is, you don't want my, you want the summary that I just worked on. I have two copies.
I can, I have more copies here.
I was going to say, I can give out my two copies.
The one number I haven't, that I overlooked is the young adults, so that's $169,500. So you'll see a number missing.
Do we need one more copy over there?
No.
Are we okay?
Should have enough, yeah.
Okay.
So that's a quick summary of the request we made in our operating budget to the city. It also details what we're going to be asking for in the capital improvement plan.
And then what happens with, so how is this presented?
It's in documents that I submit to the budget department. The budget department will then review it, ask questions, provide more feedback, do more, probably estimates, scenarios, correct numbers, do that sort of thing. This year is different than other years.
Are we ready to move into the process?
Are there more questions?
Because this is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Scott, now that we have the what, and at any point, we can revisit this, let's talk about how the budget is going to proceed to passing. And it is new, and it is different. Yeah.
So it seems like every year, we change the budget process, and this year, we're changing the budget process. The budget process has changed again. In the past, I would submit this request that you see in January. This year, we've accelerated the process, so it was requested beginning of October, and we send it to budget. Budget will review it, will have further discussion. And then unlike past years, our requests will then be given over to council. So in the past, this information that I'm sharing with you now was given to the mayor's office, the mayor's office would put it together, and then the mayor would announce the budget request in March. On March 6th, I believe, was the date they would usually do it. This year, it got moved back because we have a new administration, and they wanted to give the new administration time to get up to speed and prepare the budget request. So that's how it went. And the council folks weren't, didn't have access to this information. You, us, we always provided access to this, because our request was transparent, and we would submit it to council, because we are, this is a governing board, we're not like the other departments that exist underneath the mayor and the CAO. So what's happening this year is all departments will be submitting their budget request. Those requests will then be passed to council, so they'll be able to see what Parks and Rec made in their request to run their operations, just like this.
So yes, so, you know, they won't see it first in March, they'll see it much sooner, but.
Yeah, and I don't know when that will be.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it could be as, it could be, it could be January, it could be.
Before January, you would think? I mean, you don't, you don't know, you're guessing.
I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what that rule is. They have not told what that is.
So to just summarize, make sure I understand it real quickly. So you've turned it in early October on that operating budget, based upon the numbers that are, that you just saw then, that we talked about.
So three months early from.
Which is right, three months early. And this is going to be massaged by the CAO and others that'll be looking at it, will they come back to you?
I'm not sure massage is the right word. It's going to be, we're going to have discussion about it, we're going to have agreement, disagreement. We're going to look at the numbers, we're going to get it prepared into, in alignment with what can be done in terms of finance and budget, what the city's revenues and expenditures are going to be, competing priorities. All of that stuff is going to be going. I would assume the next two months, I'm not sure.
And that sounds like it's going to be more inclusive of the departments than it has in the past, maybe?
I don't know.
Hard to know?
I can't speak to that process.
Okay. I guess the reason I'm asking is, sometimes it seems like it has gone into, we've turned it over, and it's gone into the budgeting process under the.
The veil.
Yeah, that's why, so it's sort of massaged in there, and then suddenly, it comes out, and here's what it is. So we're expecting maybe some questions to come back and forth, things like that?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I have not been through the process, so I'm not sure how it's going to roll out. But this is essentially the request our board has made of the city, and the recommendations of what we want to achieve, you know, in alignment with our strategic plan and our goals and objectives. So we'll have that discussion, and they'll make a determination as to what they, what can be funded, and then it will go to council. And then it will go to the mayor, the mayor will then announce it on March 6th, and then the process will proceed from there. The mayor's budget will then move into council's hands, and then council can make adjustments based on their priorities or their discussions.
Okay. Do we have one additional step in there that we didn't have before, in that when it goes to council now, is it just, when it first goes to council, not when the mayor presents the budget in March, but when he maybe sends this to council, say, in January or something? We would, we would hope. Okay, I'm not asking for it three or three months in advance. When they get it, will the council members have a chance to give input then to the city, or we don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
I have, if it works the way it did in the past, they will have access to this information. I don't know when that access will be.
And we don't know whether they just have access, or whether they have access and feedback?
I don't believe they'll have access and feedback, because it will be the mayor's budget. And the mayor's budget, the mayor and the CAO will craft the budget based on.
You don't think there'll be any?
Well, that was what I was wondering, why are they giving it to council early if they're not looking for council to say, let's try to craft this together?
I don't know how that's going to work.
Okay.
I don't know that they know how that's going to work. They're developing the process right now. The goal, I do know that when the CAO announced this back in his press conference, that transparency is the goal, so sharing this information is what we're striving to do.
Okay. So worst case?
There is something out here, says a new budget process for 2025. A new, more collaborative approach has started with public input in September, followed by December meeting between the administration and city council to establish priorities. The process includes continued public engagement through town halls in January and February, aiming for greater transparency throughout. Key priorities include core services, affordable housing, and small business support. They list a lot of things, so.
I think that gives us a little direction for when we need to do things, which is what we're trying to get to.
Can you read again, Sharon, that December, the council and mayor collaboration?
Public input September, followed by December meeting between the administration and city council to establish priorities, and continued public engagement through town halls in January and February.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And that leading to the March budget, we would assume, and then leading to council's revision of that budget.
Okay. 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 Ideally, we want the administration, when they come out in March, to give us 9% increase, and council goes, yeah, team. Right? That's the dream, or fantasy, or?
Or we need to advocate along the way then.
This is the process. So we propose what we're seeking, they say we can do this, or we can't do that, or yes, we can, you know. And then they look at all the competing priorities.
So the end message is, everything starts a lot earlier than it has in the past by three months, and it is far more collaborative, or the goal is for it to be far more collaborative. And that there won't be the tension in March to.
Surprise, the mayor's budget looks like this, and the council is envisioning this type of thing.
Right, right.
And from what Sharon read there, it sounds to me like some of that input from the council, if it's happening in December, they need to hear from us prior to that.
Okay. Well, are we ready to go to work?
Yes.
All right. I have to say, what the end goal is, has, we already know, because Garrett did it two years ago, when he and Sharon were in advocacy, and Garrett came out with the month-by-month, here is what we're going to do. Now, we've learned a few tricks, so we're going to incorporate that. We have a different timing. So let's start with just general themes, we want to make sure the administration and the council know about us, okay? And then from themes, we're going to go month-to-month, what we should do each and every month. I will tell you, it's a draft. Sharon or I will write it up, circulate it again, and we'll come up with a final, even though it's, you know, we have time to be thoughtful about it. So this is our first step. So be as wild and crazy, and then we'll make it more realistic as we work through things. Fair enough? Everyone ready? Purple for themes or green? First choice. Purple. Thank you, Shannon. Okay. So what are themes we believe every administration and council person is going to respond to as we advocate? Literacy?
Is that what you mean by that?
Children, or adults, or both?
Lifelong.
Lifelong? Okay.
Everybody.
Great. I can see an L theme coming.
Library. Community, community resources.
Love it.
I think community resources, thousands of access as well. I think a lot of councilors will have time to cut down, making sure that we can expand hours and that.
I think access, being relevant to everybody's life, being there when they are there. Expanding hours and throughout the system. We're good?
This is a little different, but kind of acknowledging that we know this is, like, I think we've asked you to talk about being a team player, so maybe putting forward the library's role in assisting during a tough time.
I, yeah.
Our role as like a resource.
For the needs of one. Good, good, good. I appreciate everything. Anything else we want to put in there? And again, just the first hit. Okay. These are general themes all of the council members will like. Are there any targeted themes that will only go to specific counselors? And here, I'm thinking the Bookmobile. It's not going to go to all of Richmond. It's only going, which districts do you guess? And this is just a guess, we're not into precision here.
Eight and nine.
You know, I'd say that I think it actually does a broader than just those districts, though. I think, I mean, even in the first, I think, and we could sit down with Andrew Breton and talk about how, you know, it reaches those other areas that are important, and that it takes, when you do that, maybe not for the first district, but we had Belmont, for example, if it pops over to Scott's addition, whatever you want to call the whole area there, it may take. it may take some pressure off Belmont occasionally. If, you know, it's hitting far outside, maybe it takes some of the pressure off West End Hills.
Okay, okay.
So I mean, I think it actually does help everybody in the city. I mean, it's, it's not.
Okay.
I, I do think it's important for, for those areas.
We don't have eight and nine speaking for this, though.
Right, those are big ones.
Yeah.
The other thing I was going to say with that, besides the bookmobile, I think you have specific things to each library that you get when you talk about expanding hours and things. And I think where youth services librarians.
Okay.
For example, Broad Rock very much, you know, has the outreach to immigrant population where there's kids after school or they need the hours available. They need to have the youth services librarian there, not just half of the time, but all the time that people are there. They may need some other support. They may need half an F T E or an F D E more on average because of who they bring in there than you need at Belmont or than you need at West End in particular, maybe. So I think.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
You know, we should try, look at those. East End may have some of the same.
And actually speaking to, when we talk to council, speaking to their particular area, that, that is powerful messaging.
I think if you look at West End and Belmont, you've got an older population. And you do want to talk about that lifelong learning type of thing there and those.
Right, 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 right.
So I mean, we each have, each library has its.
So we want to make sure that we do some tailoring.
And one thing I'll add too, I know, you know, obviously another eight, another nine. I also want to add in the southern part of the sixth district as well. You think about Hillside Court, you think about Ogle Bell Mead, I mean, those are areas in addition. Though they bottom right against the eighth, and I think it should be targeted.
Objective salary. And even in the fourth district, as far as like Fisher, I think, at the front of the edge, you know?
Okay.
We are, this is away by there.
Okay, great. Okay, you feeling good? And I, and I think, you know, this is the whats and the tailoring, the whats will make it even better. Ready to go to how? Okay, so let's put month. Audience, administration, public, council, you know, whatever the audience is. And I have to only use words I know how to spell, and action. Okay, Bill, Sharon, where do you want to start? You want to start November? You want to start in December? Where, where do you want to start?
November, because they're going to start talking in December, we need that something.
I, I agree.
Okay, so let's do November. Okay. What do we want to do?
I'm going to suggest that we think of the audience for a minute.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I really think in November and then in December, so maybe, you know, across the early December and November, we need to both get to our council members and talk about this individually, sort of moving on what that monthly discussion with the council member approach.
Okay, so you think it should, when you say, so you think it should be a conversation?
Oh, I, I mean, I think more than just something inviting them personally.
Okay, great, 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 great.
And, and I also think that maybe you or you and Sharon, whoever, there has to be an approach to the empty C A O or the C A O at the same time. I mean, I think they're both happening and we need to be lobbying the both.
Because I'm looking, in December, they're going to need to identify five to seven shared budget priorities between the city administration and city councils. We're going to narrow it down to focus, so we need to.
Okay, okay.
We've got to fit under one of those five. We don't want to, we don't expect to be a five, but I would assume there's going to be wrong categories.
Okay.
So yeah, Chris, my, my thinking is that maybe something should go out inviting, maybe before or if not following. I sort of like the idea that people try to get meetings with them, walk through a real quick summary of this, and then get something out thanking them and repeating those points, you know? So to tell them what you're, to tell them when you call to make the appointment, meet with them and tell them, and then remind them what you told them.
Yeah, and tailored to their branch libraries, right? Generally, but with the specifics for their branch libraries.
And then we've got a third audience, which is the constituents, the users. Whether we want to somehow get this out to the general population to let them know, here's what the library is.
I think Garrett is a step ahead of us with that. Do you want to talk about what you're thinking about?
Sure.
I think Garrett is a step ahead, yeah.
So one thing that Chris and I talked about last week is now, in addition to this like meeting with some people on council that I have close relationships with, I'm going to ask a few of them to kind of join on this effort and actually do an op ed to talk about the importance of the library, the functionalities of it, you know? What is it, what is it doing for our communities to kind of like help push that out to people in the community? So they understand whether it's the fourth, where a lot of us are in, or the first, or the fifth, or the eighth. They, they can understand what that is and hear it from their voice. I mean, it's one thing to hear from us in different capacities, but I think from here, from the people who represent us in council, I think it's going to be compelling. So that's part of my Friday ask, when I'm using my council person to do that, so we'll see how that goes. But I think that hopefully by getting that and, and not just having one do it, but like maybe they can go in and co-author and kind of put it through R T D or other kind of mediums that we have here in the area. I think that could be helpful in our, in our arguments.
Okay, so an article, a letter, a piece to push it out to the general.
Sure, go ahead. You're asking them to, to put something together. And not that anyone wants to plagiarize or anything, but my experience has been on something like that. If you can give them a little bit of a, okay, something they can work on.
You always do their work for them.
Right, right. Here's the kind of thing we'd like.
Exactly.
I mean, we need to kind of, I don't know, say, develop.
You are totally right.
Some sort of standard thing that we can give them because, and then when people start going, you know, they, they start having these town halls in January, you know, we need something we can hand out to people to advocate for us.
And we want to think about timing too. We don't want to peak too early. We want to boom, boom, boom. So, so we're going to want to have Jen, the library outreach person also. So, so we'll share this, Scott will then align, because I agree, we need to have all of that information. But we're just messengers, we're not. Okay, ready to move to December, January? All right.
Well, this is what I'm saying, we need to have a one page, one, one page that we can give them that, you know, summarizes something like what you give them to your area, you know? What our needs are and, and the reasons why.
And, and why it benefits them, the need and the benefit. Not just what are, we're not expanding hours, nobody cares. How does that respond to need? How does that create benefit? Yeah. So is that for council? Is that for the general public? Is that for all of those things?
Well, at that point, you know, the, the council is deciding on these priorities, so.
Right, right.
And depending on what they decide, we can come up with something a little later that pushes for the public.
Right, right.
Or something, but we need something for council.
Yes, all right, okay.
Chris, I'm, I'm just going to suggest that could be something that somebody who's a wonderful marketing person drafts. And I think you, you fit that bill.
I think we're all that person.
But, but it could be sort of almost a standard one that we use with each district with a.
How do we add things in?
Well, benefits, and then a second little paragraph, whatever, benefits to, to your district. So it can be something, everybody gets the, everybody gets the basic. And then, and as a reminder for yours in particular, so it sort of customizes it enough.
And I like that customize. Okay.
Yeah, Bill and I were actually on the same wave, yours as always. But I remember a couple, a couple of years ago, and Scott, maybe I'm not remembering this correctly, but I remember you pretty good, a really kind of good like roadmap, if you will, something like that, I have to dig it up. But it kind of really told, I think where my brain is going is, is for the community telling the story of like how this process goes, so we can, so we can help them in understanding where their advocacy kind of fits into the entire process. So I don't know what that looks like. I mean, I can sketch something, but that's kind of where my brain went tied to like a one page or maybe something at the bottom that says like, okay, you know, November through X and date, this is what we need from you to make sure that the library gets what it needs to be able to expand its programming.
Okay. And a Christmas card or a holiday greeting, right?
Have we ever had a, a city council meeting at, at the main library?
You, you mean actually a whole of the city council meeting with the clerks there and the public?
And the public and everybody coming in. And they say have meetings at schools sometimes, I don't know if that's possible.
Let's have invite them to host meetings at their local library, yeah. Invite in 2026 when they look at, you know, their calendar. If they'd like to house one of their meetings at the library, we'd love to have them.
And I don't know if we can do this in, something that's kind of cool, like put out a challenge in a way to every council person. How many people in your district can you get registered for a library card? Like something like that. I think that'll be some, a way to kind of tie the community in, but also kind of like legend a little bit. Like, you know, during your, during your monthly meetings, I know, I know Cindy knows this, but Reva, Reva, yeah.
Yesterday, Reva had her senior day and we had a table set. But all of the members of my advisory board, Mr. Mitchell has made all of us T-shirts. I have different colors, so I wear my T-shirt almost every, a different T-shirt every day. So I have people come up and ask me about the library. A lady came yesterday and she was like, you with the library? I said, I'm on the advisory board. I need a library card. Evan had the equipment to give the library card yesterday, but she made it a point to say she was coming into the library today to get a library card. Then I spoke with a couple of other people, even Mayor Stoney. I spoke with him yesterday because the building is gorgeous, it's not as large as the one on Old Warwick, as, especially the parking, but it was just so many vendors there. And our T-shirts spoke values, like one day it was like, all of y'all work for the library? And I was like, you know, we're on the advisory board, Heather is the manager of Broad Rock Library. So it was just inviting and it was so enlightening to me. And Reva has posted us up on Facebook here with the library sign.
Yeah, yeah.
On her Facebook page, yes.
I love it, yeah.
So as advertisement, I don't know how we can do, because a paper, I know there's all the literature that we have at Broad Rock on the table, the people come, walk right past you. They don't stop, they're coming in to do what they need to do. But if they have a spokesperson like myself or other people to invite them to the library, it speaks values.
I like it, I like it. Okay, we ready to move to February and March? Okay, and March is when the mayor puts out his budget. Presumably in December and January, they pick those five or six topics. So when the mayor puts it out, if it goes the way I suspect they want it to go, everyone will be on the same page, right? So, and this is all a guess from Sharon and Scott, but a lot of the work is so much earlier than what we had before. So in February and March.
When I think of February and March, guessing once again how the process is going, I think that we probably need to be reminding council members of what is necessary, what we, what we need to do to get things, you know, what's needed for us to accomplish all. And then at the same time, once again, for someone to be interfacing with the administration and trying to just remind them, I mean, I think there's a certain amount of that. I know that no one's doing that other than the directors through the other departments probably, but we sort of fit in a different category in the library. So I think we've got a, a reason and a need to be in and talking to the system. We're, you know, as a board, we're looking down the road. And we're hoping, you know, to get some assurance that this and this and this are going to happen.
So you make me think of something really important. During these initial November calls, we shouldn't just talk at them, we should talk with them. Is there anything in these increases they have a problem with? Do they have any concerns of something we've missed? If they don't like anything, we now know we need to develop a better case and communicate with them. If they, we, we need to be asking questions, right? And seeing what they like and what they don't like. So that by the time we get to February and March, we have a pretty fine tuned who, who we know is going to support us and who we know this isn't, they don't care. This is not their thing. And we want the answers to be true. We, we can deal with, with truth, but we want to know our landscape. So by this time, we should have a sense of. So this is another personal touch. And if they had a problem in November, we can now in February provide any additional information to move them in a different place. So we want to get moving. Okay, admin, so this is another chalk in some way or another to the C A O, mayor, D C A. Just sort of the whole team.
Yeah.
A conversation.
In front of them.
However, the way it works. Okay. And again, we will know what concerns they have. We will try and provide information to move them. We may succeed, we may not succeed, but we will have moved up our, our audience. I'm going to tell you what I'd like to do in April. Are we ready to go to April? In 2025, in May, we went to all of the town halls that each of the council had as a big group. And we had our children's librarians talk about summer reading and we took a picture. And we, I, I don't know if we want to do it in April or March, but I would say the tenants of that summer reading, we definitely love children, families coming with a lot. tenants of that summer reading, who doesn't love children, families coming with a large group, who doesn't like going to their town hall where we're making them look good. I think we absolutely a hundred percent want to do that again if Scott says it's okay. Yeah. And we probably want to get scheduled. What do you think? March or, what do you think? We want to get on their schedule early because last time we missed on a few people because they just already had things scheduled out.
Is there an advantage to doing it in April because we'll see what the budget is or, and then we're actually trying to say, okay, here's what we should be able to do
And school doubt may, so, yeah.
Yeah. Or, or is it, or is it better to do it earlier and say, this council person, notice how many people are excited about it before you vote on it?
I'd say momentum wise, it's better to come on super strong and in numbers in April.
I do know that Riva doesn't hold some meetings in January and February, part of her season starts in March.
Okay.
Because of the weather.
Right.
And she knows that the seniors will still try to come even if the weather is failing.
Okay, okay, okay. Now, I have a question on where we are from November to April. So I'll just write down group, town halls. Do we want to work with our sister organizations, the foundation and friends at any key points? It, I mean, it's absolutely their call. Is there any section that we want our sister organizations to be working jointly with us?
You know, my, my thinking there is that the foundation in particular, if we are getting any pushback, if we're getting any hesitancy as we talk about these things, can, can do a nice job of coming in and talking about how they as the fundraising group to supplement are behind some of these things. They've helped with literacy. They're trying to get funds to make this, but the, they still need more. I mean, I think it's sort of shows that trends is, trends is a little bit different because it's not as much money involved. And that's more of a getting them to touch base, I think, and say, this is really important to our people. We see this all the time. People are coming in and out, you know?
So are we thinking an email campaign where letters to council or to the administration? Are we thinking joining us at the town halls? I, what, Garrett, what do you think?
I think if we can have people like at a, at a united front, I think that sends even a more powerful much as, like for example, for our town hall, like we have like Susan who does an awesome job of being able to convey things from the foundation perspective. I think it means a lot. And I know early this year I attended the third district council meeting with Kenya Gibson. And just having representatives from the library and then me being there, and I know everybody experienced the same thing. It was, it was powerful. I mean, people were like, I had no idea the library did these things. And I think it, it garnered interest. They wanted to get involved. Somebody even reached out to me after that meeting about joining the friends.
It's a good recruitment.
Yeah, it was great. Yeah. So I think it touches so many things in, in, in a small period of time that I think can help us in our argument.
Okay.
It multiplies the benefit. I mean, you know, multiplies our efforts if we've got.
No, number.
And they talk to different people.
Numbers are, you know, whether it's a bunch of emails from the library saying protect our budget or it's a physical showing up. Yeah. Emily, do you think we should do emails to or do you, what do you think?
Emails to.
You represent a key audience.
Yeah. Do you mean emails to?
Council from, ask the foundation and friends to help us with the outreach?
I mean, it would be interesting to know what other people think too, but my inclination is no, that feels like it's coming on a little strong.
Okay, okay.
But, but you know, I'm.
No, I, no, we want to, yeah.
Authority on this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Janet, Brent, what do you think?
Well, we should definitely involve. I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Don't you think?
Okay. So in November, one of the things we want to do is to let foundation and friends know what we're thinking about. Are we okay with that?
I think we absolutely should be sharing that million, nine percent, that million dollars. And here are the goals to both of those groups. The foundation is absolutely critical because they know what those things are, I think.
But I do think that having the other organization, organizations involved to kind of demonstrate and, and sort of influence the public. So I know that when I went to, I think it was the fifth district meeting, I ran into a couple of people that I knew and I spoke to them. And like having people who were on the friends, who are social, who were able to connect to other members of the community.
Oh, I like that.
And then sort of, so influence them in the meeting, but then also kind of demonstrate to our council person, you know, that we, we have a little weight, you know, we have, we know people and, and sort of, sort of as an influence campaign, I guess, having people just in person.
Right.
To be effective.
Yeah, yeah, we like that. Okay. And, and we'll let, we'll tell them what we're going to do and then offer them how willing we are to work with them collaboratively. Or, but if they want to do their own thing, that's fine. Here's the message. Because we all need to be on the same message. How we interpret that message, we can be enormously flexible. Okay.
I know we talked about having another joint meeting in the future. Would that be an opportunity?
Yeah, we could do that. So what, when do you think the timing would be good for that?
I guess whenever we want to take the push.
Okay, don't, don't look over there because we'll be too busy. Look here. Look here.
I was thinking about January, February.
Okay, okay. I like it. What do we think? Yeah.
Brent, can you say that again? I didn't hear.
Uh, having another joint meeting with the foundation.
Yeah, to all be on the same page.
They all on the same page. Kind of get the word out and come up with a plan.
Yes, go quickly, Scott. The, this Friday, the capital budget concept comes in there. Do you have any idea when they're going to talk about anything after that? Because that's also, I mean, the capital budget is really very foundation oriented in a certain way. I mean, it can be. So I think it'd be nice if, if we had, I mean, we're talking about operating budget lobbying here. We haven't gotten into the issue of capital budget does need to be supported also as we go through here. We don't want to forget that as we do this. And that may be, that may actually be one where the foundation has as big a role as we do in some, some ways. Because they may be able to say, look, we'll split the cost of studying these four library branches or, you know, things like that. I mean, we, we don't know now. We're not at that point. And coming up with that and that joint meeting is, is maybe the time that we do some of that too.
Okay.
Talk about how we.
What's the time, not to get up, Tom, but what's the time we have with capital?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, I know you submitted, but then is there, is that, that's not an annual. They don't have a drop date as to when they decide what C I P projects are going forward.
It goes along the same.
It does.
But it's a five-year plan.
Okay.
So every, it lists five years of the C I P because some of the.
But it's rolling five.
Yeah, it's a rolling five-year plan. Yeah. So the C I P.
Yep.
Approved projects will go forward when the council approves the budget. The budget and the C I P get approved at the same time. So if they want to put a new fire station in, that'll get approved and it would begin in F Y twenty seven. So it could. Or if there's projects already in the capital projects that are already identified that, okay, this is the next year a fire station gets done. And so that's how it moves forward. It just, it's a go or, it's like a green light, red light.
Right. Sharon's journal background work is amazing, Tom.
It says in November, debt, C I P and utilities comes into play, budget finance, review funding sources, affordability and projections, and decision-making begins on which projects to include in the upcoming C I P. That's November.
So now, you're, you're going to get that stuff in term at the end of this week and then in a couple of weeks, they're going to be deciding, does it make this year's call or not?
Yeah, that's what we included. That's what was in the report. So the.
Right. But I'm going to move quickly once.
And, and I'm reading off the R B A government website.
Just from what Sharon wrote, I mean, I almost got the impression that the priorities will get decided before the end of the year maybe. And then, then it's okay. Now here's how much money you have in the capital. So we go down through the priorities. I don't know. Maybe I'm misreading that. I mean, that's often the way capital budgets work. You know, everything gets a ranking and then you say, okay, now we've got this much money to spend. So the first eight items get funded and the first twelve or whatever. So I don't, I don't know. But I mean, I, I do think we need to not let the capital sit until, maybe until March.
I don't know the city. There are many more experts at this table than I am. Does it help to go to the subcommittee meetings or not? So the, it was a, it was a subcommittee meeting or a committee meeting that you just read about for November?
Cause I didn't do it. That, that may just be the admin.
I don't know what she's.
Yeah. Okay. So let's think about, if it's valuable, we can consider it if it's, they don't want to hear from us. They want to do their own thing and we would just be sitting back quietly. Okay, we'll, we'll ponder that. That's a good data piece.
But, but somewhere in there, somewhere between November and March, we need to have one contact that isn't about the operating budget, but is about the capital.
Okay, okay.
Is my point there.
Okay. We're going to presume that by the end of April, if we're not where we should be. Okay, we're going to do one last thing and then you can go back to thinking about what you want to think about. To make all of this happen, right? So to have the conversation. Which we have listed for November and February, March. What do you need? What information do you need to get on the phone or go to your councilman's office and chit chat with them?
So if we feel like there's five points outlined in this, give them enough without those.
The budget outline, okay.
You need more on that.
Just so I make sure, I'm sure I understand the context that we would be approaching them at this November meeting. They will have already seen the budget that we've submitted. No?
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
I don't know. So we're giving, yeah, I don't know. And I don't want the administration to get ticked at us for telling them things that the administration wants to tell them. Good point.
But I mean, we could say this is the budget that we submitted because these are our priorities and I want to talk to you about our priorities.
Or we could say going into the future, here's what we would like to see with no reference to budget at all. Yeah.
We're hitting the topics without the dollars, right?
Okay.
Maybe.
Again, I do not, I want the administration to always know we are on their team and we're not going around them.
But I would, I would think we could say, here are goals that we have at this point. We're not saying, you know, we hope you can fund them.
Not budget.
I mean, I think it's still very impactful, impactful to say, we want to talk about access and extended hours without having a number next to it. Right?
Right.
Yeah.
And I think we could comfortably tell people, we think we could do all this with less than a ten, you know, with around a ten percent.
Don't talk money, Bill.
No, no, people are going to ask. And if you sit down, I think you're going to get the questions.
And you're right.
And I think you.
And so let, so let's think carefully about that.
I mean, keep it in general.
So then what can we say? What can we not say? So to Emily, Emily's point, we're going to say impactful things. We're going to tailor it to hit their district and their local library. And then we're going to ask questions and we can figure out. Okay, so we need impactful information, tailoring, and the probes for what we're saying.
I have to agree with Bill that it's going to have to be some conversation about money.
Okay.
If I walk up to somebody and say, please give me, give us something for extra hours, you know, they're going to look like, you know, how many hours, how much is this going to cost? That's, you know, that's what they want to know. So I think we do need to talk dollars.
But I think Emily has a point there. And then maybe we don't need to get down into the weeds to the point of saying, we need this much for this, this much for that. As much as we need to say, really, it's important that we extend the hours because, you know, we're, circulation's up, the door counts are up, people are trying to get to us, you know. If you looked, you know, we hear anecdotally people going to neighboring libraries because their hours, you know, and all the municipalities are better, you know, all those kind of things. And be ready to, you know, talk about and go through all five points. And at some point, they may say, so, you know, what are you really talking about? Money? Say, well, you know, obviously we've submitted that to the administration. We're not really sure how that process, you know.
It's new to us.
You can say nine percent.
But, but I think we can say, you know, nine or 10% is about where, you know, for new programs, you know, in addition to the normal, you know, increases. Because, I mean, Scott, what did they put in, just in general for the, how much is, is the base budget they're going to try to increase? Any idea? I mean, we've got security. They asked for those finance things to separate from that fight. But they said there were things that, boy, V R S is going to go up. And we don't have to put those kind of things in there. The, the union negotiation rates.
We don't, we don't.
We don't do any of that in our budget request. They, they do that. So when we say nine percent, it's not including those increases.
Yeah, it's different. Yeah.
Right.
This is, this is operational.
This is in addition to the normal.
It's in addition to the increases to just, like, to just keep everything.
This is funding to achieve the goals and objectives of the board as we determine them.
Well, we all need to speak the same language. So if we're going to say nine to 10%, then that's the money we're talking about. I mean, or if we're going to go the dollar route, then that's whatever we're going to go with. Everybody needs to.
Oh, you're exactly right.
Same thing.
I'm also curious, what is the, so at this meeting, the focus would be on the annual budget. How is C I P referred to or, you know, or not referred to in, in that meeting?
Okay, Scott, I'm going to ask for your input. Do you want at these initial November meetings to talk operational and C I P? You want both talked about?
It's the, when they approve the budget, they approve the C I P. So those are questions that are going to come up and they're interrelated.
Okay.
And you know, I might point out, like whoever's meeting with Sarah Aubrey Baker or some of the folks, you know, she was the one who really spearheaded along with, with Riva, the, the attempt to get property taxes reduced a bit. Well, when they talk about that sixteen million, we're talking about, you know, one sixteenth of that that we need to do it. I mean, it's a really pretty small amount when you think about when they talk about some of those things. You know, I, I do think there's some value in being able to, with certain people. And, and she's one who's had to give on that and is going to be in there saying, well, you didn't give people a reduction, let's give them better service.
I like it. I like it. I like it.
You know? Um, street sweeper on my block this year. Last year, it was twice. When I first moved in my house, the sweeper would come down Broadway twice a month. So that was one of Riva's reasons for not wanting the taxes this day and time. The services that we're receiving now is nowhere near as they were years ago. So where's the. The services that we're receiving now is nowhere near as they were years ago. So where's the money going?
Okay. And we're actually saying such an exciting story because we're doing so much better. Every month, we're doing better and better and better. And we wanna continue doing that. I mean, that's to Emily's impactful, you know, we're climbing the hill here for the residents of Richmond.
And one of the things that always comes up, you know, City School's gonna take. I mean, you know, Cameron is gonna be asking for more money all the time.
Oh, of course.
Which is okay, but when you think about how much more he's asking for and what's happening, we really, that literacy thing, you know, it's big. We, we are the best return on the dollar as far as advancing literacy.
I don't argue that, but this November meeting is to find out where they already believe.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm not suggesting for November, I'm just talking in general, just keep that in mind.
You know, we wanna have a good statement.
Right.
We're really finding out where we're gonna be with.
Yes. That's right.
And, and then we may need to redesign to do some, but we're really finding out the landscape, which we hope is good. But we need to find out. So as a next step, I am going to Sharon and I are going to ask Scott to work with his managers to tailor for each library where they, the messaging they think their councilperson will wanna hear. Always true. But the numbers, the heartfelt story, whatever. And then Sharon and I with Scott will massage that into a draft impactful statement and come up with some prompts for questions.
What I've noticed, I don't just go to these meetings and to the library. So they're doing an improvement on Hall Street. They're bringing the traffic down to one lane on each side.
Yeah.
Gonna slow it down.
Yeah.
But Bobby Vincent, when I was at the meeting at George Rivers.
Yeah.
It was eight of us there that weren't from the city. When he did the meeting at Hall Street, it was only two people.
Yeah.
That weren't from the city. How do we get these people to come and know what's going on? And then we have the ones that complain, well, when did they say this? Or when was they gonna do this? How? Using the library? Because the library can have, maybe, not all the time.
Right.
I can get some of my people to come in and speak to people when they're coming in and out. Did you know this is what's going on on Hall Street? Or did you know that they were doing improvement? Do you know that we only have three libraries south of the river?
Okay.
It's things like that of verbal communication.
Right, right, gotcha, gotcha. I really appreciate that. The other action I'm going to do, Sharon or I will type up the notes. It will go to you. Do you guys wanna respond via email? Do you wanna take it up at the, the next, we don't have a November meeting. Do you want, how, how do you wanna polish this up or at least the first steps?
You can, you know, I'm not gonna.
We can do it via email, but we've gotta watch the.
But we're always gonna go through, yeah, we're not gonna make a mistake with this. No, we're gonna work it through.
Cause everybody's gotta reply to all.
Who I trust with my first word, you know, yeah. Because as soon as we get a draft, you know, and look carefully what we're doing in November through January, we can then share it with the foundation and share it with the friends so that we all are beginning to think about, budget is not magic, budget is effort, yeah.
Scott, I mean, you can help us on that maybe by just blind carboning all of us so that we can't reply all. No, can't do that?
Poor Sharon, poor Shannon.
Shannon, why, doesn't that?
No.
No. No, no, I'm just saying then we can't reply. And we don't know who we're replying to. I see it, for example, on, on things with church where they don't want everybody and it goes, the reply doesn't go to the replies. It only goes to the originators that way.
But we have to follow the letter of the.
It's true. You can't do blind comments.
We're not supposed to, right?
Ah, I don't. Can we put it in Google Docs?
Yeah.
Well, then people can comment, then you're creating like a room where you all can go into electronically, which is probably not within the no, I, I would say that's a no as well because you can make comments on it and then you're conducting public meetings. So that's, if you keep that in mind, then, and then you keep the rule. That's essentially how we think.
I'm not tall enough to get it. How are we feeling? Good start?
Yeah.
Okay, I want you all to think about these things and really concentrate on November to February because then we will have learned so much. We will revisit, we will redesign, we will take all that we've learned and get better. But we'll have a whole layout, but that's what we're gonna concentrate on. You guys look great. Thank you. Oh, please do.
Between now and November, we're not having a November meeting, is that correct?
I don't believe we have a November meeting, no.
It's the first week in December, so it's about five weeks away.
Right, but in the meantime, we are, we need to speak to our councilperson.
No, we need to get the plan.
Okay, so we're not talking to anybody yet?
Right.
Not yet.
I, I think we need to get our plan. Now, at the same time, you and I will work with Scott to get the messaging so that that can turn around pretty quickly. But, but that's a really good point of clarification, so. Okay, we good? Super good. Feel very proud of you.
One very small thing, I'm looking through this list, I'm going through my mind palace. I have like good examples that I could speak to my councilperson when we get to that. Except for, I think, the main library crisis and the renovations needed, I can't think of like an email with specifics or like some kind of anecdotal data that I could share with them. Do we have any more details on what's needed? Cause I, I understand that it is, but I can't think of specifics that.
Ceiling tiles falling down, waste, yeah, we got that.
Messaging, especially derived from the master plan, it identified a lot of things that we're working on, that we're fixing, but also, you know, just the welcoming environment of the building.
Right, right.
It's challenging.
And then we also have benefits, we were talking about the other day with, if we could renovate Main, we could probably use our FGEs more efficiently. So Main could run more programs with the same staff if they didn't have to sort of be watching these disjointed areas of libraries.
There's long, there's hiding places and things like that. We've gotta maintain the space and make sure. So we have to have people in those spaces. We always need people, but, you know, there are things that we can do to improve that.
Yeah, just some language to maybe better understand.
We need better language on everything.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Well said. We'll, we'll move the timeline a little bit from November to December. We'll do the backroom work right now. And this is all stuff we want outlined. We want Scott to be agreeable because he's gonna be sending out in their general announcements the same, you know, he's gonna be mirroring if we say access, he's gonna wanna have a Facebook. Millions of people come through, yeah. We all wanna be doing the same thing. And you guys have a much higher reach to the public than we do. So, yeah, we should feel good about, we've got a ton of work to do, but we should feel good about this. All right, Emily, anything to say? Oh, and thank you again to Bill and Sharon and to all of you. Anything for policy?
None.
Okay. Cheer report. I have things to say. What a surprise. I want to go back to our improving and expanding facilities. And first say, I am delighted that we had a unanimous vote to support Main improvements, expansion of Belmont, Westover Hills, East End, and looking for new places we can have libraries to serve a public. We fully support that. Now we gotta get going, right? So one of the things Scott and I learned from everyone we talked to who had built a new building is you guys messaging sucks. You need to have a much stronger elevator pitch. That, of course, will help us in advocacy too. So Scott has already engaged his managers. And they have had initial, very fruitful discussions thanks to him. They will, over the next month or two, come up with their sense. That's internal. Users now, and users are us, the trustees, the foundation, and the friends need to also begin thinking, what is the elevator pitch? And then we'll merge those ideas with something that we all agree to. Or at least we've all heard. We may not agree to it, but we know it's what we're going to say. So kudos to Scott, he has already started that. Our work will come in a few months. But it will be important work for all we're doing. The second thing I wanna talk about is those three libraries we want to expand. Scott and I went and met with Gail Johnson, who is that new, the newly created group, General Services Administration. She, well-respected leader in the city, has been named head of it. Turns out she loves Westover Hills. It is her neighborhood library. And when we talked about the expansion bit, she had suggested to Scott, why don't you think about getting an engineering architect feasibility assessment to see if we can expand on site to 15,000 square feet? So Scott, with Gail's coaching and pushing through, has done all of the work to request a three library engineering architecture feasibility for expansion. The RFP is going out in the next week. We will certainly by the first half of 2026 have a city verified answer on expansion options. So if it turns out, and I don't know this because I'm not an engineering architect, we cannot expand Belmont, then we know we have to pursue a new site, right? If we can't expand East End, right, now we know. So this is going to be a critical step in figuring out our facility's roadmap. And Scott has launched both of those moves. And we're moving with dispatch, so, so I wanna thank him.
Yeah, it'll come out of this year's CIP money.
It's kinda, kinda, coming out of our million CIP. We fortunately have money. We have money.
That starts the process so we can get more numbers for future stuff.
Right, so.
I'm sorry, does the city have engineering firms that to work with?
They do, but I don't wanna work with them. We're gonna do an RFP for the process because I'm not keen on the firms that they have because they don't have experience building libraries. They're wonderful architectural and engineering firms, but I would rather go out and see what the, who is interested. And the piece of this that will be very helpful, thanks to the facilities committee, is the report that we did. So we're not gonna have to ask an architectural firm and an engineering firm to come in and go, we're gonna need to do community meetings and surveys and gather information.
You've already done it.
We've done that work, so we're gonna be able to say, go to Westover Hills, the lot's an acre and a half. Can we put a 15,000 square foot building? What does that look, can't we, how does that, how does that, is it a tear down? So those are things that we can get from an engineering and architectural firm for the locations.
They don't have to start from scratch.
We're not starting from like a master planning process, so they can go and get to work on the details of what they do and not have to do all of the public meetings and surveys and discussions and stuff, cause we've done that.
Oh, yes, okay, jump, let's do governance next, can we?
Oh, oh, no, go ahead.
I'll be really quick, guys. So just wanted to give you an update on where we stand with governance. I know over the last few months, we talked about filling the vacancy that we had from Gail. We've longer as part of the board. I'm happy to report that our recommendation, Antoine Green, has been approved by the Education and Human Services Standing Committee last, well, actually, October the 9th during that 2:00 PM meeting. But the last step, this, part of this process is that we'll have to get approval at the council meeting that'll take place on November the 10th. We'll be fine on that, I'll say that. So after that, he'll be able to join our board.
Thank you, and thank you for all your efforts on that. That was that was very good. All right, finance, Bill. Oh, I'm sorry. Of course.
I'm loving, you know, what you said is getting ready to take place, but I'm always pushing for these satellite sites. Is there any thoughts or prep work being done to look at what would be required to set up branches in satellite sites in those areas that are least served? I mean, can we, I, I don't know what would take to get started. I'm looking at that. Are there certain requirements that the city has, you know, insurance, live building rent? You know, I, I don't, maintenance, I, I don't know what, is there a list of things that the city would require our building to have? Yeah, I don't even know the questions to ask, but.
The other thing I'll tell you is that Scott and I have met with Kevin Vonk, who is the planning person for the city, who knows all the populations and where everything is and can you logistically get to one place or another? And he is thinking about just that issue for us, as to where are the population deserts that need? Yeah, now, if you know some of them, great, just we feed it into him, but we kind of thought he would be a good first step.
Because I'm sure there will be money involved that we.
Always money involved, yeah, yeah, so true.
Looking at, let's, let's get that started.
Yeah, but if you have some thoughts, absolutely tell us and we will make sure they, they get in.
I guess the bookmobile will help with that, right?
Bookmobile will be a real good tool.
Yeah, we can send it out and try it so we can go to a place. We're preparing an RFP right now.
Did you figure out what what size you wanted or is the RFP gonna do that?
The RFP's gonna help us, we've got some ideas. We haven't finalized them yet, so. It's, I don't have a final answer, but we'll know by the end of the RFP.
Other questions?
I don't really have anything on finance, budgets, scheduling.
That was big, that was huge.
On scheduling, we're good.
Yeah, that was huge, okay. Facilities?
What you just talked about.
I know.
The RFP for the engineer, for the three branches that were promised. So that's the schedule.
Yes, thank you.
I have some other things to add. The Greenie in Richmond Public Library, Hall Street in Belmont, those are in process and scheduled to probably start, begin work in the spring of '26.
Okay.
Ginnor Park Phase 2 is proceeding. They've installed some pervious, some pervious pavers to let water flow through them and worked on some pathways. And I don't believe the outdoor shade structure is, is installed yet, but it's coming. And then that's it, that's all I have to add.
Okay, questions for Scott? Any unfinished business we wanna take up? How about new business? All right, our next meeting, what is the date? September 3rd, it's going to be. September 3rd, it's going to be.
December 3rd.
December 3rd. It will be at Westover Hills. So have a good Thanksgiving and Halloween, everyone. Are we ready to adjourn? Thank you, guys, good job.